Good evening, everyone. We apologize that we're starting a few minutes late. Welcome to the regular meeting of San Rafael City Council. Today is Monday, October 6th. I'll request the city clerk to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yarenz Galadie is absent. Mayor Kate.
Present. I invite the city attorney to report out on the closed session that was held prior to this meeting.
There were two matters. There was no reportable actions to the first. The second matter, the court, the council will resume the closed session following the regular meeting and I'll report out following that at the next regular meeting.
Thank you. So, good evening and welcome. Whether you're joining us here in person or online, we are so glad that you're here. I'd like to begin by recognizing the incredible effort every single day of our city staff. Thank you for being the backbone of our community. And as part of that, I want to highlight especially the Employee of the Quarter for 2025 Q2. So, this is a program where city employees nominate and then select an employee of the quarter. And this year, this quarter, it was Walter Gonzalez, who's our management analyst in the City Managers Department. I'm going to say just a few words about him because it truly highlights what we hold and what we value here in San Rafael. Walter is a steady force that keeps everything moving forward. No matter the challenge, his response is consistently, "Yes, I can do that." And he delivers every time. His data analysis and follow-through were key to the success of the illegal dumping program. And his intelligence, creativity, and persistence helped secure a $750,000 C-level RISE grant. As a bilingual employee, Walter is an invaluable liaison to the Canal community, ensuring their voices are heard and respected. Congratulations to Walter for being selected. So, as we begin tonight's meeting, I want to briefly acknowledge that we're doing so with a federal government that has shut down. These moments can understandably raise concerns how it might affect our daily life right here in San Rafael. So, let me assure you, local government, San Rafael is open for business. City Hall is here, our staff is working, and the services our community relies on will continue. We'll closely monitor any impacts, particularly if there are federal funds at risk, and we'll keep our community informed as we learn more. A great way to stay informed, if you don't already subscribe to the City Managers newsletter called the Snapshot, that is a wonderful way to stay abreast of the situation. As we know, San Rafael is a resilient community. We faced challenges before, and we always get through it together, working together. We support one another, we stay informed, and we focus on solutions. I believe that that spirit of connection and hope is one of our greatest strengths, and that will see us through the days ahead. Before we start the business meeting, we also include a land acknowledgement. This statement is in addition to the work that we do on a daily, ongoing basis with the tribe. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Cozumelwak people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Ranche Ria, and we honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. Thanks again for being here. We're glad you're here. And I will turn to the city clerk to describe how people can participate in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. For members of the public who are wishing to provide public comment, displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay within your two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. Viewers may request reasonable accommodations to provide public comments virtually. For more information about that, or if you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofsanralfal.org. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start by our city manager and councilmember reports. I'll turn to city manager Alavich.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. So, I want to start by appreciating some staff as well. We had a really great celebration. The downtown library grand reopening was back in September 20th, but we haven't had a council meeting since then. And it was a really fantastic event where we celebrated significant safety and aesthetic upgrades to the downtown library. There's also building excitement for the future downtown library and community center at Albert Park, thanks to the Citizens Initiative, which the voters passed last year. There's a Measure P update on the agenda tonight, so we'll hear more about that from staff. And then, the shout-out is for Andrew Powell, the Public Works Engineer in particular, who led that project, was there and spoke at the event, as well as Assistant Director Daniel Avalos and Director Catherine Kufa for their exceptional leadership on getting that project over the finish line. There's a special presentation tonight acknowledging Fire Prevention Week. I wanted to say a few things in the spirit of that. The fire department hosted a badge-pinning ceremony here in the council chambers the afternoon of September 26th. It was a really lovely event, and a lot of the councilmembers were there. The fire department celebrated new hires, promotions, and years of service milestones. It was a full house in these council chambers. There was a lot of friends and family. In particular, Chief Roman, Chief Hatfield, Thomas Wong, and Danielle Jones did a phenomenal job making that event really a special experience to honor the whole department's team, and I'm sure there were as many others who contributed. I also wanted to acknowledge that today, about noon time, our fire department responded to a structure fire at 32 Woodland Avenue, mixed-use auto body shop with attached apartments. The crews contained the blaze within 20 minutes, which is pretty amazing. Limited damage to the structures. All residents were safely evacuated and able to return once the building was cleared. One worker sustained minor injuries while attempted to control the fire and was treated at the scene. The cause of the fire is still under investigation, but I thought it was apropos to appreciate the fire department for their professionalism and responsiveness in keeping our community safe. A couple of meetings coming up. We have city council subcommittee meetings. These are public meetings. The agenda and link to where you can view the meeting on YouTube is posted on the city's website. So, the next city council homelessness and housing subcommittee is October 21st at 11 o'clock here at City Hall in the upstairs conference room. And then, the next Police Advisory Accountability Committee is on October 15th at 5:30 PM, which is here in the council chambers. We have a ton of events. We're still in kind of like fun end of the summer, early fall. So, Pickleweed Park ribbon-cutting and Movies in the Park is Friday, October 10th, this coming Friday. So, the ribbon-cutting will happen at 5:00 PM, where we'll celebrate the new improvements, including playground, exercise equipment, and the all-turf soccer field, which has been, I don't know, decades in the making. From 6:00 to 7:00, there'll be park tours and pre-movie outreach booths where the community can connect with city staff and other community partners. The film is Mufasa in Spanish. That starts around 7:00. West End Block Party is again this Friday night from 6:00 to 9:00 downtown from F to G Street. We have a public safety center open house, which is just across the street from City Hall on Fifth Avenue. That's this Saturday, October 11th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There'll be both fire and police, public safety professionals there, kid-friendly, family-friendly event, and of course, the Canines will be there. So, kids love those. Mill Valley Film Festival is ongoing, October 2nd to the 12th, in theaters all across Marin. 11 Days of International Films and Documentaries. This year's highlight is a tribute to Spike Lee, who will receive the Mill Valley Film Festival's Lifetime Achievement Award. Halloween is big this year, so we got a whole slew of things. So, the library is having a costume swap at Pickleweed. Use costumes. You can do a trade. That sounds really fun. October 14th from 4:00 to 6:00. Taralina Pool is doing the floating pumpkin patch, where you get your pumpkin out of the pool, which I'd love to see that with the kids. Anyway, October 18th from 1:00 to 3:00. And you need to register for that event, so you can go to the City of San Rafael's Recreation, Library Recreation website for that. There is a treat walk that's hosted by the city at B Street Community Center. That's Thursday, October 23rd from 4:00 to 6:00. So, it's treats, decorating, face painting, all those things. And then, Saturday, the 25th from 1:00 to 3:00, the Downtown Business Improvement District is hosting their annual trick-or-treat on Fourth Street with all the merchants. There's a pet costume contest that's sponsored by Woodlands Pet Food and Treats. That's from 1:00 to 2:00 in the Plaza. There's a trunk-or-treat sponsored by the San Rafael Police Department, with apparently a very festive San Rafael police car passing out candy from 1:00 to 3:00. And then, there's a prize wheel this year in the Plaza, sponsored by Foster Our Future, from 1:00 to 3:00. So, a lot of fun to be had.
Thank you, city manager. I'll turn to my colleague, Vice Mayor.
Well, I don't have any floating pumpkins to report. There was a great weekend with the library reopening was on Saturday, and then, which the city managers already described, and on Sunday was Porch Fest, with which Councilmember Hill will describe. Great weekend. I also attended the board meeting of the San Rafael Sanitation District. We discussed our strategic plan that we're moving forward with Central Marin Sanitation Agency. We're awaiting input from their lawyers on the exact some issues in the proposed agreement. I was also very pleased to represent the mayor and the city council at the San Rafael High School Hall of Honor Celebration. There, community volunteers Mary Lou and Dan Murphy and Linda Landers-Markwick were honored and installed in the Hall of Honor. In addition, teacher Kathy Gonzalez, Ms. G., who she taught both of my children calculus, was inducted into the Hall of Honor. So, it was a great pleasure to be there on our behalf and talk about the benefits the school brings to our broader community. And finally, international renown is San Rafael's. At the Marin Sanitary Customer Appreciation Day, the Recycled Orchestra of Catura, Paraguay, played a lovely concert on instruments made exclusively from garbage, like paint cans turned into violins. It was absolutely amazing. Towards the end of the concert, though, they stopped and put on T-shirts honoring Joe Garberino, who brought them here for the first time. So, there, he is an internationally honored person, and it was a fantastic experience at Marin Sanitary. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. I was also at the library ribbon-cutting, the Marin Senior Fair. Thank you to a number of the departments from the city of San Rafael who participated. We had Parks and Rec there and library services and all sorts of groups, so thank you. The Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority Board Meeting, we'll hear more about that tonight. I had the opportunity to welcome Marin Center for Independent Living's new executive director, Ted Jackson, who many, he's served in the role of their policy person and is now their executive director. Also attended Porch Fest, and I'll let Councilmember Hill speak to that. The Marin Council, Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Legislative Meeting, as well as the general meeting. I also heard the landfill harmonic band at the Latino Chamber of Commerce. They really are amazing. And in addition to what Councilmember Bushy said, the trash they collect is from the area that they live in, which is they're in the slums of in this area in Paraguay. And it's really amazing, the work that they've done, and they established this, really, this orchestra. Attended the Spirit of Marin Awards and the badge-pinning ceremony, Sustainable San Rafael. We were able to recognize Bill Carney for his work at Sustainable San Rafael and for his number of years of service there, and he is still continuing on. He can't retire. So, but it was a nice way to be able to recognize him. I attended the Canal Alliance Community Fair and the Mill Valley Film Festival opening night.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I have been heaped upon a lot of expectation to talk about Porch Fest. That was on Sunday, September 21st. I'm going to subjectively say it was the best Porch Fest, yet the weather was very cooperative. I did go the one year that it rained, and it was still amazing, but it did not draw as many folks as it did this time. So much gratitude needs to go to all the organizers and volunteers. I'd like to call out the president of Crystal Park Neighborhood Association, Gina Silvestri, an amazing leader in the community. All the sponsors, they got a lot of sponsorships this year, including Honda of San Rafael, and the performers in the community that actually turned out. The energy was tremendous. Anecdotally, I got to meet some folks that came all the way down from Petaluma. It's drawing folks pretty far away for a neighborhood-driven event, so that was really amazing. On Wednesday, September 24th, attended the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members with Mayor Kate, Councilmember Micah Yarenz-Galadie, and Councilmember Kurtz. There, we received information on a public-private partnership in Mill Valley to support affordable housing. Interesting model that is working for that community. And then, was able to attend on Friday, September 26th, the San Rafael Fire Department Badge-Pinning and Awards Ceremony right here in these council chambers. It was a tremendous event. The public is always invited, but specifically, I just want to call out all staff members who were promoted and received awards. And it's an opportunity to experience bagpipes right 20 feet in your face. It was amazing. I recommend everyone attend. And then, I also attended the Sustainable San Rafael event honoring Bill Carney, who is a great leader in our community for ensuring that we are going on the right path for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have three items that I want to report out on. The first is, I'm your representative on SMART, Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit. The August ridership, August of 2025, was up 27% over the average August of 2024. And when you compare the SMART past total passenger miles from Marin Sonoma across all the transit agency, SMART had 33% of that total, 2.9 million passenger miles. And that is higher than Golden Gate at 24%, and Marin Transit at 13%. We also had during the body of our meeting, we had a hearing regarding the resolution of necessity to acquire real property interest by eminent domain for pathways. It is SMART's belief that those pathways, which are literally within the railway, should be, should enable, provide the opportunity for SMART to build pathways. But there is a lawyer who lives outside of California who is determining how to monetize that. So, we have moved to an eminent domain, although we are working with each property owner individually. The next item is TAM, the Transportation Authority of Marin. I'm your representative there. As you may know, if you commute at all north, the opening of the Marin Sonoma Narrows happened earlier last week, I think it was, or just the week before, so that is relieving that pressure. In addition, we have the Clean Fleet Expo is on October 8th, that's this week, from 10:00 to 3:00 PM. It's free. It's at the Civic Center, and I'm honored that I'll be able to make opening remarks at 10:00 AM as I am the vice chair of TAM. The Walk and Roll to School event is October 8th, also this week. So, if you see lots, even more kids walking and rolling, that is why. It's part of the school that campaigned to have school kids use other transportation besides cars. And then, finally, we have a Street Smarts campaign that is now through November 14th. And I was talking to Director Miller, and I don't know where they are. We have lawn signs that I'm going to give to my fellow councilmembers that you can stick at key intersections, and it reminds all of us to slow down, don't look at your phone while you're driving, and it has other messages that are always good to be reminded. So, I will pass that out, too. We'll have those at the end of the meeting. And then, finally, San Rafael participates. We're actually the only municipality that participates in the Marin Gun Safety Collaborative. This has been an interest of mine, and we have participated since the beginning. It was created by DA Lori Fergoli and also Mothers Demand Action. In 2023, and that's the most recent data, there's one gun-related death every 11 minutes. Sit with that. It is the number-one cause of death for children age 1 to 17 years old for the fourth year running. So, you can see why we participate in the collaborative to prevent firearm deaths here in San Rafael. This collaborative has been doing incredible work, and such incredible work, that it competed for and received $829,000, big number there, for gun violence restraining order work. So, GVROs is the acronym, and that is a proven program to reduce firearm deaths in a community. And because of the deep work that the collaborative has done, and I have to give a shout-out to Chief Spiller, he's the, besides the sheriff, the only two agencies that are participating in Marin County in the collaborative. Because of that, they received a big number of 829,000. In addition, San Rafael Police Department also competed for dollars and received $483,000, and that will go to San Rafael Police to enhance crisis response and intervention and help support our SAFE program. The SAFE program is our Mobile Mental Health Crisis Unit. So, congratulations to SRPD, as well as to the Gun Safety Collaborative, so we can do all the proactive steps that we can to prevent firearm and gun violence in our community. So, as always, thank you to my colleagues for all the work you do off of the dais and outside of tonight's meeting. As always, we like to have any comments. Welcome any comments from the public on any of the reports that you just heard, the city manager or councilmember reports. If you'd like to share something, that would be your opportunity. And you are welcome, but not required, to say your name and what part of San Rafael that you live in.
Albatere's Gerson Park. I have a quick question. For SMART, for the millions of miles that you're taking cars off the road, do you get carbon credits for that? Do you get any recognition? Or is it just business as usual?
Great question. Not carbon credits. We can talk about that offline, but that is one of the premises and backbones of SMART, is it does take cars off the road. And I should bring that number for it as well, because those passenger miles are ones that people are taking on the train and not in a car. Not seeing any other public comment. I'll close the public comment and move to the consent agenda. We have items 5A through 5G. I am going to pull items 5B, which is the Agreement for Environmental Consulting Services for the Dominican Residential Development Project, which means that I would welcome, unless there are any other items that my colleagues would like to hold. Not seeing any, I would welcome public comment on items 5A and then 5C through 5G. We will receive public comment on 5B, but that will be after we have staff speak to it. So, if you want to speak to 5A, 5A, C, D, E, F, or G, come down and make a comment now.
Albatere again. Just because I see both of them in the same, on the same page, and I've been thinking about this. I use the library a lot, and I come in here. But wireless access upgrade, is it possible to remove the unsecured feature of your wireless access upgrade, is it possible to remove the unsecured feature of your connection? Because whenever it connects your internal network, it says it's unsecured, and it would be nice if it said secured. That's, that's all.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the item consent agenda, not including item 5B? Not seeing any, I'll bring it back for a motion on those items.
So moved.
All the items except for 5B. Thank you.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurt.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 4-0. So 5B, I understand there are folks in the room who are interested in that item, so we wanted staff to speak to this item, provide any clarifying comments before we open up the public comment.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, council members. Micah Hinkle, Community and Economic Development Director. Joining me tonight is Principal Planner Christina Estadio. Before you is a really contract, more of an administrative process approach, related to entering into a contract with ESA for SEQA Consulting. So that's the California Environmental Quality Act Consulting Services for the Development Proposal for Dominican. This is a standard process approach, and this is kind of part of the process development review. And given the size and the needed technical assistance related to SEQA evaluation, that's why we're doing outside consulting services. That's, there'll be an opportunities, really, for the public and interested parties to comment on the project as it moves forward towards the Planning Commission, that's likely the next review. But there's a slew of information that's required in order for us to do the consulting and background studies related to the project for the SEQA review process. So I have Christina Estadio here, in case there's any additional information you wanted to add, but we're available for any questions you may have on this.
Thank you. So just to clarify, it's not a discussion on the merits of it, it's of the project itself.
That's correct. It's not the merits of the project, but just the contract services in order to do the background studies for determination of the California Environmental Quality Act. This phase, we anticipated being an environmental impact report. So if you look through the staff report, there's 100 pages of sort of type of studies, information, background of the qualifications of ESA as a firm. We did do a qualified consultant search for this, and we actually had really good qualified firms put in for this. We're happy to have ESA actually be selected as that particular firm, given their background and work within the Bay Area.
Thank you. Additional questions? Yes, Vice Mayor?
I have two questions. First, I noticed in the report that the environmental impact report is a full scope report. Is that the highest level of environmental review that we can ask for?
So the environmental impact report in general is the highest level. What the full scope refers to is that all of the SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act Appendix G topical areas are going to be included. Sometimes, in order to streamline a process, some of the issue areas will be screened out. Typically, minerals, resources, ag resources, if you know it's not, not an issue on the project site, there is a process that's needed to do that screening. And in the effort of full disclosure to the community, we elected to go for with the full scope.
So the whole thing?
The whole.
Second question, I think this goes to the Director. Would you describe this as a routine administrative matter?
Yes, I would. And this is really allowing us to actually enter into the contract. As you've noticed, the size of this contract would exceed the city manager's authority, so it does require full council approval for this contract of this size.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Hill?
Yes, thank you. I have two questions. One is, just as a matter of clarification, the state legislature passed AB 130 over the summer that restricted SEQA evaluation. Based on when this project was proposed, would it be subject to AB 130, or because it was beforehand, it would still have to go through a SEQA process?
AB 130 limits the project size to be 20 acres, and this project size is over that limit.
Thank you. And then, I know it's in the staff report, but just to confirm, can you describe the fiscal impact to the city for this contract?
So actually, there is not a fiscal impact to the city, as this is, one of the requests we're actually is making a budget adjustment to allow the city to accept a developer deposit for this work. This is actually fully paid for and funded by the developer.
Thank you. No more questions?
And if I could add a clarification, at this point, the contract is before City Council to give us the authorization to enter into the contract, but we are waiting the developer's deposit before the work will be kicked off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any questions, I invite the public. If you would like to comment on this item, now is your opportunity. And as always, you're invited, but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in.
I'm Don Dickinson. I'm an almost 46-year resident of the Dominican neighborhood, and for 45 years or so have been walking on the property subject as a development application. And understand that tonight is only about the contract, not about the merits of the project, so I'll limit my comments to that. I was interested to read the request for proposal that was distributed by staff on May 2nd, and it was actually very impressive, very complete. I was actually very pleased to see that, and then anxious, eager to see what the result of that would be. And last week, I guess, I finally saw the proposal that was recommended for authorization by the city council, and I was very pleased. 81-page proposal, a contract document with consultants ESA and Farr and Pierce. As a retired city planner and county planning commissioner, I've dealt with both firms over the years, and they're both very competent, both very locally connected. I've dealt a lot with ESA over the years, and Farr and Pierce was the traffic consultant on the city's general plan, and also the peer review consultant used by Public Works. So they were very good choices, and I was very pleased with that. And I want to compliment staff for that whole part of the process. And part of the proposal actually is, on page 11, the recommendation from the consultant for a full environmental impact report, and that's what's being budgeted for. So I assume that will actually be what happens. The question I have is, in previous conversations with city staff, I asked to have the documents posted online, and it was in a very long, an hour and a half conversation with the applicant that I first learned of an inconsistency determination letter that was sent out on July 2nd to him, but not posted online. Janie, actually, after I made the request, posted it online, and it is there, it's hard to find, but it is there. And my question regarding the contract is, I mean, that was a 135-page document.
You can wrap up your, get to your question.
Okay, that listed extensive inconsistencies with city's policies and, and regulations. And I assume the applicant would come back, revise the project before the environmental review. But I gather the environmental review, the EIR, is being processed based on the December 2023 application.
Thank you.
And nothing's been revised?
So what we'll do is, we'll get all public comment and questions, and we'll tier them all, and then staff will answer.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Yep.
My name is Craig Fenwick, and I live in the Dominican neighborhood. I moved in about a year and a half ago. And I have a couple of questions. One is, how big a deposit is being required of the developer for the EIR?
So go ahead and answer all your, ask all your questions, and then after public comment, the staff will answer all of the questions that have come out.
Okay, so that's question one.
Yep, we're taking notes.
The other is, there was an agreement that I've seen online between the city and the developer, Mr. Cassidy, that said that he was to pay expenses incurred by the city for the purposes of this permitting process on an ongoing basis, ongoing timely basis, and that failure to do so would result in the application being deemed, his application being deemed withdrawn. That was not permissive language, which would have said maybe deemed being withdrawn. It's a requirement under the contract. And as far as I can tell, the city let him make his payment almost six months late, between five and six months late, $59,000. So my question is, why didn't the city abide by their own agreement? We've asked this question in writing. I'm on the Steering Committee of the Safe Dominican Valley, and we've not received an answer, and that's been some weeks now, and we'd like to have an answer. Those are my two questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public input, additional questions, or any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Ron Kleiman, and I'm a resident of Dominican. I want to express my support for the full and comprehensive environmental review of the Dominican project. I'm especially concerned about the need for a thorough traffic evaluation, especially regarding the streets that border the property at Margarita Drive and Highland Avenue, where four houses and six duplexes are proposed. As you know, Margarita Drive is a single-lane road that services two-way traffic. On one side of the road, there's a deep gully, and the other side is a steep slope with no shoulder except for wood chippings. Not only is it a narrow road, but there are a series of blind turns right where the units are proposed to be placed. Right now, if two cars meet, one has to back down to the intersection of Highland and Margarita for the other to pass. This is quite tricky, especially at night, since it means backing around blind turns without going into a ditch. At least once a year, a car will get stuck in the gully and need to be towed out. And over the past few years, the situation has only become much worse with the marked increase in Amazon and UPS truck traffic. In addition, with the increased presence of PG&E and Marin Wildfire tree work in the neighborhood, the road is being closed intermittently, at least one day a week, every two to three weeks. I hope that whoever does the environmental review will speak with the people who live in the neighborhood and who have real lived experiences with the daily traffic issues when evaluating the problems. How is this road going to handle the number of trucks and equipment needed for the proposed job? And once completed, how are cars going to be able to back out of their driveways at right angles onto a single-lane road? Let alone, how will it handle any evacuations in the future? And the newly proposed private road that blindly enters the intersection of Highland and Margarita will definitely be a safety challenge. In fact, just to add another point, this past year, the city put up flexible barrier poles to indicate the ditch, and within a week, one of these was destroyed by a vehicle.
If you could finish your comments.
Took a turn too quickly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to provide comment?
Hello, my name is Sarah Sonnet, and I've been a resident of San Rafael for 22, 23 years, living in the Dominican neighborhood, working at Coleman Elementary School, and at the public library here for a little bit. And I'm a walker, and I want to echo, when we look at transportation for the environmental review, also the number of students that walk elementary through college age through the neighborhood. But one of my biggest concerns goes back to our highlighting the wonderful work that our firefighters do, and the fire danger in that area. As you know, there was a fire there a few years ago. It's a very steep, narrow canyon. Fire spreads fast, it's really like Pacific Palisades. And I think we need to be aware that those roads are not wide enough to really handle a fire response in an appropriate way. But the other thing that concerns me is that, you know, trees have been cleared, and work has been started. We don't necessarily have all the fees paid to do the environmental review, and we're entering our wet and rainy season. And last year, we had flooding down Locust Avenue, and the city did some fire mitigation on Gold Hill, and you can just see where the hills are unstable. And so my question is, what do we do in the meantime? While this is all going on, if we have a mudslide in that area, if there's flooding, who covers that cost? Because we've started some development work, and we haven't even agreed. So please take that into consideration.
Thank you for your comment and your question.
Hi, my name is Michael Poreas, and I live on, right on the intersection of Highland and Margarita. First, actually, I want to say thank you to Mayor Kate. Anytime I've emailed or sent something, you get back to me like right away, and I know how busy you are. I don't get back to my good friends that quickly. So thank you very, very much. The fire that the woman just spoke about, that was the fire that started at the base of the hill where I live. It took that fire about five or 10 minutes to get within 20 feet of my house. The firefighters, God bless them, were there and stopped it. But it was an unusually calm night. It wasn't the typical breezy night that we have up there. And the firefighters said, if it was that breezy night, I would have lost my house, and lots of the neighborhood would have gone. It was that something was shining above us for that to happen. And I start to think about how I was getting out, how I was going to get down those roads. What if a tree blocked one road? I wouldn't have been able to leave. We are in a very precarious position, as it is, for fire. To add new development and new cars and new population up there is Pacific Palisades. It isn't like, it is Pacific Palisades. I know people that lost their homes in Pacific Palisades. And, and I also know people that lost their homes in Altadena. When that thing happens, it happens, and it just goes crazy. I understand and appreciate the need for housing, I truly do. But what needs to be taken into account is where that housing is. And to put it into a place that is so obviously perilous is, is just irresponsible. So, you know, I am here to say, please do all you can, to do all studies you can, to really realize why this shouldn't be happening.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else want to comment on this contract that's before us?
Thank you very much for looking into this. I am a 21-year resident of the Dominican. I have walked many of those hills. I continue to walk with my dog every day. And I am, I appreciate everything that everybody has said, because that, the mudslides, the fire danger, the single-lane road. Not only is this dangerous to the people that live there now, and all of the hikers that go to visit there, but the people who will eventually live there, I don't know that they'll get insurance. I know that the developer says that there is equitable housing going in. I don't know if those seeking equitable housing will be getting that insurance. I looked at the 1998 EIR report. I am definitely not an environmental assessment person, but even I could tell that what the developer submitted relative to that 1998 EIR report, which it's been 30 years, many of those issues, the Sisters Creek issue, the drainoff, the mudslides, the steep slope, I am sad that we're here today wasting everybody's time and money. And my question is, the developer submitted several different bids for many different houses, or housing plans, and yet the inconsistencies in what he applied for relative to what is possible there, my question is, is anybody looking at his real skill level, and what he's trying to do in that neighborhood, and then what the city will have to pay for if all of it goes through? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to comment? So we are just, before the council is the contract for the environmental review. So we're not reviewing the project merits, which we're always interested in what you have to say, both tonight, and you can always email us, but that's not what's before us this evening. We will be talking about the professional services agreement. Yeah, come on down. There you go.
Chris Wyker, I've lived in San Rafael since 1958, and I'm a Dominican resident. Under the category of follow the money, is there a deadline for which the developer must put up the money for the said contract here, or just going to kind of have it hang out there? And given his track record of being late, six months late, as reported tonight, are you sure that this guy's got the kind of money behind him to be able to pull this off, or are we just all in a big exercise here? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or input on this contract? Any other questions or input on this contract?
My name is Tim Blair. I live at 80 Fairway Drive. I would like to know, considering the topography, the geology, and the hydrology of this type of property, this hillside, why on earth is this kind of development with such infrastructure costs ahead, even if it were approved? Being approved rather than doing something like a property swap trade with the developer for a much more manageable, non-step property somewhere in the jurisdiction of San Rafael remaining area? It makes no sense also after our open space use of that property for all the years. Literally, even if it's approved, and how many years to do that kind of development prep is huge in cost. And they're going to end up with tremendous costs. So the SEQA, I don't fully understand all the details of the evaluation environmentally, but just in anticipating the kind of costs. So that in itself is a huge issue. And I don't understand why the planners of the city have not considered in the last year, in this whole operation, why we can't have some property swap trade. This developer just wants to make money, and he's going to end up with his partners, investors, putting millions of dollars in development. And it seems like a total waste and abuse of the Affordable Housing SB9 mandates that he was trying to utilize to get this approved in the first place. Enough said. Thank you.
Thank you. So any other comments about the contract? We're not discussing, although we always want your input, on the merits of the project. We will not be answering any questions about the merits of the project. That's not what's on the agenda. So I am writing down the questions that relate specifically to the contract. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Gary Raggiante. I've lived in Dominican for 48 years and Marin for 77, which means I'm very old. I want to bring this back to exactly what the mayor said. I am in full support of the proposed contract and the scope of the review with ESA and Fair and Spears, and I support it 100%. There will be another time and another day for a discussion of the merits. But our main concern, mine, was to make sure that a full environmental impact report was done, and that's what I hope the council will do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else want to comment on this item? Not seeing any movement from the audience. We're going to close the public comment. And as I already mentioned, there were some good questions and input in there, but that's on the project merit, and that's not what's on the agenda tonight. I did, I do think there were some questions that I think are appropriate, although the city attorney will tell me if it strays too far. One was about the inconsistency letter and the EIR. Like, what's the relationship between that, I guess? So the inconsistency letter, and then the EIR starts with, do they have to fix inconsistencies on the EIR? So that's question number one. There's a question about the deposit amount that the applicant would pay. I think that has to do with this. And then there was another question about, will the applicant, the developer, pay the expenses of the process and timing? And why did the money come in later than the deadline had been put on the city website?
I would agree, and just note there were a number of other questions.
Right.
And that, to be clear, they're all questions that staff is prepared to address at an appropriate time. And people can, you know, make arrangements to communicate with staff, email their questions and such. But we are going to be limiting responses tonight to the agenda item, which is the contract before the council. So I think the mayor's correctly pulled out the questions that are relevant to the item.
Thank you, City Attorney.
So a lot of the questions, at least, I think, relevant to this one is really about the applicant's standing in terms of outstanding bills. Payments haven't made. The applicant is in current good standing with the city in terms of bills. So that's, we work in good faith with all our developers in terms of payments or sometimes delays for different reasons. So the current standing of the application is in good, good standing. So in terms of requesting payments for this project to move forward, we did actually send a billing request and a deposit of, current payment required of $772,743. So that's paying for the EIR in full as a deposit, along with anticipated administration fees and then consulting charges. So we are looking for that payment to be made full before we actually enter and move forward with ESA. So that is a request that the developer has received that was sent to him on 9/18. So.
And then maybe you could expand. The public planning process is always a little bit confusing. So the EIR, Environmental Impact Report, what's the relationship between that and any sort of pre-work, such as the inconsistency letters that the city has sent? So if you could just explain how they intersect or don't?
Sure. I'll actually let Christina actually answer that one.
So it is definitely confusing. The consistency analysis is a document that's required under the Housing Accountability Act, and the city is required to document to the developer all of the inconsistencies with the city's objective standards. So that's a separate process from the California Environmental Quality Act, which is where the city is going to be evaluating the environmental impacts of the proposed project. And the consistency determination, its recommendations to the developer, and it's good communication. But the city does not have an ability to force the applicant to change their project to comply.
Thank you. And if people have additional information or questions, is there still the website on the webpage where people can email? I think there's a link.
Yes, on the city's website or the major projects, there's full links for this project amongst others. That has actually all the project information. Once, if council does move forward with this, we'll actually be able to update project status on where we're at. But that's where the best connection point is for anybody interested in this project.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the council? Not seeing any, I would entertain a motion on this item. Vice Mayor?
I have a question first for the city clerk. Do I need to read the whole thing?
No, you can approve item 5B if that's right.
Sorry?
You would be to approve item 5B.
I moved that we approve item 5B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please. Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Mayor Kate? I, that most carries 4-0. And I will note that there was also comments around wildfires. So I hope you're staying, because we will be having an update later in the meeting on our wildfire prevention efforts in San Rafael. So stay tuned if you want to learn more about that topic. Before we get to that agenda item, though, we do have a special presentation, and this is a proclamation recognition of Fire Prevention Week. As with all our special presentations, I invite public comment before I read the proclamation. And I will note that Chief Roman is so kind that he will receive the proclamation. But first, if you have public comment on this Fire Prevention Week proclamation, now is your opportunity. Not seeing any public comment. I will read the proclamation. This is in recognition of Fire Prevention Week. Whereas historically, one week every October is known as Fire Prevention Week and is intended to help raise awareness of the risks of various types of fires. And this year, this week is held from Sunday, October 5th to Saturday, October 11th. And whereas Fire Prevention Week teaches childrens and adults how to stay safe in the event of fire, and whereas residential fires are a leading cause of injury and death and can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas this year's fire prevention theme is, quote, or is, "Charge into fire safety lithium-ion batteries in your home." And whereas most electronics in homes are powered by lithium-ion batteries, and if not correctly, if not used correctly, or damage can overheat and start a fire or explode. I think it's good that's a theme. We can all learn more. So now therefore, I, Kate, Colin, Mayor, on behalf of the city and city council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through 11th as Fire Prevention Week. And as I mentioned, I'm honored that Chief Roman is here to say a few words and to accept this proclamation. Chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, and members of city council. On behalf of the women and men of the San Rafael Fire Department, I want to express our sincere appreciation for this proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Week 2025. This year's theme, as he stated, "Charge into fire safety lithium-ion batteries in your home", highlights an important and emerging risk in our daily lives. As technology continues to advance, so must our efforts to educate and protect our community. The tragic fire on August 1st reminds us that fire prevention is not just a message, it's a responsibility that we all share. I want to thank our firefighters, inspectors, committee partners, who work tirelessly every day to keep San Rafael safe. With the continued support of our residents and city leadership, we can prevent tragedies and build a stronger, safer community together. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for all that you and your department do for our community. Thank you. We have two agenda items, which we will be getting to the wildfire prevention. So stay tuned. But first, we have a capital project management services contract for Albert Park Library and Community Center and Measure P project update. And I see Director Kuppa and Assistant City Manager Stefanski is here.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the city council. John Stefanski, Assistant City Manager. And we are very, very excited to be here this evening on what is really the first major step for us as we go in the implementation of Measure P. And so Catherine and I are here to do just a quick update as well as talk about the capital project management services contract before you this evening. So just by way of background, in November of last year, our voters passed the citizens initiative Measure P, which will fund a new main library and community center at Albert Park. And we began collecting that tax in July of this year. And this represents really this generational opportunity for our community and really is going to be one of the largest investments in the city's cultural and civic institutions in generations. And given this, the city wants to follow the well-thought-out approach that the city took with the essential facilities, work with the new fire stations over the last couple of years, and wants to bring in a professional project management firm to assist with this project because it is a very complex project. Earlier this summer, we did a formal request for proposals process. So issued the RFP in June. July 9th, we received a total of eight overall proposals, which we were very happy with. A lot of really great, high-caliber firms wanting to get in on this exciting project. Our internal team interviewed the top three proposals after we ranked them and then brought forward to our Measure P subcommittee, our finalist. And the Measure P subcommittee consists of Councilmember Hill and Vice Mayor Bushy. And so they had an opportunity to meet with Griffin Structures, who is the finalist for this work. So the scope with Griffin is going to be really from concept to the whole life cycle of this work. And so they'll be at a high level, providing general project management and planning support, as well as will lead public information and communications and oversee community engagement, as well as the design and planning process, as well as all pre-construction services, the contractor, advertisement, bids, award, construction management, and post-construction services as well. So quality control and making sure that we are building the best library and community center we can. Griffin, as a firm, was founded as a public sector developer specializing in concept-to-keys project delivery for municipal and educational clients. I think where they stand out versus the eight other proposals that we received is that they have done a ton of libraries and community centers and have a deep understanding of municipal processes, procurement requirements, and public engagement needs. And Griffin has given us the opportunity to work with Gary Chubb as our project executive. He's here tonight. He'll have an opportunity to introduce himself once we get through the next couple of slides here. So just to share with you all, as well as the public, is this is, where we are in space and time, this is what we believe is a reasonable project timeline, tentative project timeline. So, you know, we're looking to kick off with Griffin here in the next couple of weeks, in October. And that will set off a series of activities that will carry us through a construction, which we have tentatively, you know, targeting December of 2030 to have that be completed. And so that's at least the tentative project timeline right now. Shifting gears, I do want to take a moment to talk about project governance because this is a really crucial component to doing projects of this scale with this many stakeholders. And so the project will operate under this comprehensive framework with the Measure P Subcommittee, which will serve as the primary council subcommittee. So similar to the essential facility structure, we'll be running through a number of things through that committee, including a review of major deliverables and allowing the committee to provide feedback on site planning and design elements and programming, as well as helping to participate in the consultant selection process and ensure compliance with voter-mandated Measure P requirements. On the administrative side, we have a project steering committee, as well as a technical advisory committee, with the project steering committee providing overall strategic direction and ensuring that the project aligns with the city council and the organization's missions and objectives for this project. And the technical advisory committee will be just that. It will be our cross-departmental team of subject matter experts that we have on staff here to help provide additional input to the building and the project as it's being developed. And then on the next slide, I dive into, I'll dive into the community stakeholder committee. So this is a part of the project approach. We want to form this community stakeholder committee, which will be established to provide input on programming, use, and the design of the facility. We envision this to be a seven-member committee that will include representatives from the board of library trustees, friends of the San Rafael Public Library, the Golden Ares, the Park and Rec Commission, the Chamber of Commerce, the Public Library Foundation, and the San Rafael City Schools. And this is a committee that will meet a minimum of four times for very specific purposes during the design phase to review the initial program plan, the community engagement results, and conceptual and schematic design concepts before they go on to be presented to the Measure P Subcommittee, as well as the library board, the Park and Rec Commission, the planning commission, and then the city council. And this body is really meant to supplement community engagement efforts that we will be doing with the broader community. But because of the number of, like, very specific user groups and stakeholders as it relates to the library as well as the community center, we wanted to make sure that we were providing an avenue and a space for them to provide feedback in a way that was separate, but not necessarily distinct from the broader community engagement efforts of the team. So with that, I do want to allow, called Gary Chubb here to introduce himself before I round out the end of the presentation. So I'll hand it to you, Gary. Thanks.
Welcome, Gary.
Mayor and members of city council, good evening. My name is Gary Chubb with Griffin Structures, project executive. I thought it'd be appropriate just to kind of give you my background on my career. I started construction management in 1991 after obtaining a bachelor's science in construction management. Spent the first 15 years living in job-site trailers, managing commercial construction, learning how to build buildings and manage stuff like that. I then fell in love, in 2003, I worked on my first Griffin project as a contractor. And it was in Orange County, California. It was an intergenerational community center and a city hall. And by working on that project, I gained a deep understanding and really a love of community-based projects. Once that project was completed, I then came aboard with Griffin Structures about 2005 or 2006. And since then, for the last 20 years, I've been involved in several community projects, multiple libraries, multiple community centers, parks, sports parks, aquatic centers, city halls, education centers, you know, a museum, all kinds of really great projects for the greater good of the community. And that's where I fell in love with it. I have a deep understanding and appreciation for what goes into projects like yours. The energy, the commitment, the flexibility, the dedication, and really building projects to return an asset like this to the community is very rewarding, very energetic, and what keeps me working these days. So I'm honored to be, on behalf of Griffin, I'm honored to be part of this project for consideration. I will be your team leader. As John mentioned, you've got a lot of desires for multiple stakeholders. So it's going to be, it'll be herding cats, but in a very positive, dedicated way. Thank you for the opportunity, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. So that rounds out the staff presentation tonight, but the recommendation before- But the recommendation before you is to adopt the resolution to do all of that, to give Christine the ability to sign the contract, and we can kick off this work. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on this contract? Yeah, Councilmember Kurtz.
There's quite a bit of information in the report, in the staff report. And I was hoping you could just provide a little bit more color to it around the communications and how the community is going to be kept up to date on the steps and the progress. That's part one. And part two of that is the communication. Griffin's handling a lot of it, and then a lot of it's being handled by the city. And I was just wondering in terms of that balance and who's on point.
Thank you for those questions. So Griffin has a subcontractor, Circle Point, who specializes in community engagement for projects of this size. And they will be coming to help supplement the city team as it relates to developing a website, building out web content, press releases, social media content, things that we can do to help build awareness for the broader community, as well as when we get to the design stage, working with our design firm on, you know, open houses and the engagement specifically for garnering feedback on the design side of things. And so as it relates to, you know, roles and responsibilities, you know, the Circle Point team will be a part of our, you know, larger project governance structure. But all that will still be coming up through Gary and then myself.
And I also, thank you. That's helpful. And the contract of the report is really exciting to see. So I'm very, very excited by it. And just, I also want to make sure that we have that neighborhood engagement as well. I mean, we speak of it, it's the whole community. The whole community has supported Measure P. But the neighborhood's going to feel it as close as possible. Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Yeah, Councilmember Hill.
This is more a problem with me, not you, Assistant City Manager. But you spoke of the seven-member community stakeholder committee. And I was trying to write really fast, all of the different stakeholders. Could you inventory them again? Because it was, I think you mentioned there were seven, but I couldn't tell if there was, it was one representative per organization or committee that you were mentioning.
Correct. So it will be one representative from the seven. It includes the Board of Library Trustees, the Friends of the San Rafael Public Library, the Golden Ares Senior Citizens Organization, the Park and Rec Commission, the Chamber of Commerce, the Public Library Foundation, and then the San Rafael City Schools District.
Thank you. And would, just, it's getting into the nitty-gritty of the process, but would each one present a member forward for that? Correct. Okay. Thank you. And then one more question? No, this can wait. Thank you. I'll wait for my comment, right?
Okay. Not seen any additional questions. I'll open up to public comment on this item. I'd like to provide comment. Now is your opportunity. Not seen any. I will close the public comment and bring it back. And I know we all have lots of things to say. But I'll start with, I will do the Vice Mayor and the Councilmember, and then I'll have Councilmember Kurtz. But Vice Mayor, you've been there since the beginning. But that's made it sound like you've been at it a long time, but you have.
Yes, yes. I've been at this for a long time. I made a commitment a long time ago to someone in this room, and it is coming to fruition. We're voting on this tonight. We're getting started. This is so exciting. I cannot wait. So yes, it looks great. Let's move forward, get those construction cranes in here.
Thank you. I'll have your colleagues comment, and then we'll come back to you to make a motion. Yeah, Councilmember Kurtz, oh, Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, I will build upon the Vice Mayor's comments, which this moment was, there was nothing automatic about this moment. This moment required many years. This moment required organizers in our community to step forward and make certain that the ballot measure got to the voters and work hard to bring voters into the fold, to understand the vision and to make certain to support it. Money matters, and people are self-taxing to make this happen. So I am very thrilled that Griffin Structures is here to shepherd this journey for us. We are relying upon you to bring all your wisdoms, every mistake you've witnessed and potentially made. I'll just assume you just witnessed it. You will help us avoid those and help look several steps ahead and manage risk to a beautiful vision that help bring that vision to life through our community's eyes and our perceptions. So thank you so much, and I'm looking forward to approving this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Likewise, just echoing the same comments. Very excited to see this come to us tonight and to keep going. And the only step of guidance, being a project manager in heart, is early, often, and honest. Be in touch.
Thank you. And I'll just build on what's already been said. So many people have been a part of this journey, and to have this before us this evening is so, so very exciting and impressed with the credentials and expertise of Griffin Structures, the fact that you get how a community center, a library center, is truly a manifestation of those community values. And the fact that Measure P, as you pointed out, is a self-taxation, shows that this is a community value, and you get it, and you get us. So, and thank you to the Subcommittee. And by the way, we all wanted to be on that Subcommittee, so I just want to be clear about that. The Vice Mayor, because of her unwavering enthusiasm over the many, many decades, and Councilmember Hill, because it's physically located in his district. So that was why the two of them. But trust me, Councilmember Kurtz, Councilmember Micah, and myself, we all would have loved to have been on the Subcommittee. So with that, I will turn to the Vice Mayor for one of her happiest moments on the stais.
I am thrilled to move that we embark on this generational project by adopting the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Griffin Structures for capital project management services for the Albert Park Library and Community Center project in an amount not to exceed $350,000 in fiscal year 2025-26 and subsequent amendments based on each fiscal year's appropriation for a total contract amount not to exceed $4,440,606 through project completion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Thank you. We just have that little happy moment up here while we're switching out people. Okay. We are moving right along. We have the wildfire prevention efforts in San Rafael from 2019 to 2025. We have an update. I see Quinn and Kate are arriving. Welcome.
Good evening. Mayor Kate, councilmembers. Thank you for having Quinn and I up here today to give you another update on our wildfire mitigation efforts from 2019 to 2025, to today. So we want to cover a few key points tonight. Getting into our 38-point plan, we really want to talk about how this plan is currently used and how it's been used in our planning for the last few years, getting into the status of the action items themselves, and then our view of the future and how that plan will be reviewed and updated. So just to give a little bit of background, this plan was developed with extensive community input. It was a year-long process, followed by the adoption of the plan itself in 2019. This was one year prior to the passage of Measure C, which supports a lot of the work that we do. And it's really our foundation for how we view our wildfire mitigation and resilience work. Some of the uses and alignments that we'll cover, this is the foundational guidance document for annual MWP work plan. Having a document like this in place ahead of that tax measure really gave us a step ahead or kind of that leg up. And what we needed to do, we had the community input and really guided us ahead of a lot of the efforts in the county. We've also been able to integrate this into our local hazard mitigation plans. This also aligns with the county or the City Council Priority Area C, Sustainability and Resilience. And this has also been where we direct our policy focus. And we'll go into some of those achievements. So progress snapshot of the plan itself. We are at 85% completion or ongoing or projects and programs that are into maintenance mode. Four of those items are complete and closed out. Eight of those are in a completion phase but are going into maintenance. They're ongoing. Twenty-one items are more of ongoing programs. So they never really end, but we continue working on them. Two are in progress and are on track to finish by the end of this fiscal year. Two are pending, and one has not started yet. And we'll go into why. So we have a few key achievements. And I really want to preface this that of the 38 items, we've been able to accomplish a lot of them through individual projects or programs. A lot of them overlap in kind of their theory or essence. So we've been able to do that multiple different ways. We do have initial policy completion that Quinn will cover more. And we do have multiple ongoing programmatic initiatives here. So there's a few general concepts that don't fit into any particular main goals that we'll cover. But one of the key accomplishments here is that we've established a very dedicated wildfire mitigation team. So this started with seasonal employees to fixed-term employees, recognizing the need for this work to continue. That's transitioned into full-time, permanent positions year-round that we've been able to focus our efforts on the community. We've also been able to establish very good relationships with our neighboring agencies, both fire departments, towns, city governments, and other land managers. And we've been able to develop new resources through grants and partnerships with other tax measures and the agencies that control those funds to get more work done. Diving into some of those other goals, public education is really the cornerstone of how we get this information out into the public. That includes language access. That's critical to our work. That's in our written materials, printed, online, and also dedicated bilingual staff. So we're able to do in-person events in multiple languages as well. We have planned events. Those are where we invite the community to us. We also attend multiple community events. And we have coordinated efforts with our neighborhood leaders, whether that's FireWise, Neighborhood Associations, and HOAs as well. Defensible space and home hardening, most folks are familiar and hopefully have met us at their home. One of the key pieces of this particular goal is our expanded vegetation management code. This is where we've really expanded the vegetation management standards from the Wildland Urban Interface, which was passed in 2007, to citywide. So we're able to reach all of the city, as we've seen in other catastrophic fires. Focusing on one area of the city is great, but making sure that we have everybody covered with the information they need is crucial. We've also been able to support a lot of the wildfire mitigation efforts through grants and direct assistance and really expedited the work that's going to protect our residents here. From a inspection standpoint, at this point, we have 100% of our single-family parcels inspected. We're still working on multifamily and commercial dwellings as well. And to date, I updated this today, we have almost 30,000 total inspections. Those are initial and re-inspections as well. And almost all of our parcels inspected. The few that aren't are City of San Rafael parcels that might not be totally in line or inspectable. That might be open space or right of ways or whatnot. And I just want to revisit the vegetation management code. A really big piece of this is the Zone Zero, part of that standard. And so we've really been able to focus on Zone Zero, help people out, particularly with that, whether it's the home hardening, which is not part of this, but really supports Zone Zero. And we're looking in this next year to the state's law that's coming out and how that fits in with ours. But as I read today, we are definitely ahead of the curve and in line with the guidance that's coming out there. Evacuation improvements. This includes non-opt-in alerting tools. We see that in our high-low sirens, our portable LRANs, or long-range acoustic devices. We have enhanced vegetation clearance around our evacuation routes. We heard comment on that tonight as well. So that's visible, and people are taking note of that. In addition to our safe parking areas and parking box program, of which is almost completed, that'll be done by the end of this year and does have a focus in the Dominican neighborhood. We also have increased staff drills or staff training and ability to support evacuation drills. Vegetation management, also a very visible initiative that we have that we've heard comment on as well. We've been able to accomplish multiple fuel reduction and shaded fuel break projects. These include work off of fire roads, evacuation routes, increased grazing, and prescribed herbivory. And we are getting into landscape restoration as we're looking at that next piece to restore landscapes back to a fire-resilient state. I'll hand it over to Quinn.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Quinn Gardner, Deputy Director of Emergency Management. Quite a few of the items within the action plan required policy action. So I believe all of you have seen most of these, if not all of them, over the last five or so years. So some specific action items that we have completed from a policy standpoint, but all of that still requires education, implementation, programmatic support, maintenance, et cetera. So we have improved short-term rentals through requiring information on evacuations and things like that. The expanded citywide vegetation standards Kate mentioned. Again, the safer parking was before you as a policy that you had to do, and we've been implementing for the last four years, hopefully ending before this calendar year. We'll have everything updated. We updated the laws regarding no year-round smoking in open space. We've also installed new signage around all the open space that make that rule, as well as the other rules around ignition reduction clearer. And then the deadline coming up for folks is May 2027 and the removal of all the wood shake roofs. So we still have about 140 left. About half of those are single-family homes. And we're still offering grants and other support resources and trying to do a lot of direct outreach to these residents to make sure they not only meet that deadline but get the max financial assistance available that we can. So appreciate your support in all those policy areas. Kate mentioned earlier the three items that we haven't necessarily made that are, they're still the biggest items to make progress on, if you will. The first is a dual-gate requirement, which was item 37. And we're still in kind of a cost-benefit analysis of this. There's not a ton of science around whether or not that would have made a difference on fires, whether that's worth implementing as a retroactive program or just a new fencing requirement program. So that's one that we're still just working on the analysis of. And then the other two, I'll dive into a little more in detail. One was what specifically called for an update or review and update of the Wildland Urban Interface map. The map on the left is the city WUI. The map on the right combines the city WUI, the county WUI, and the recently adopted state hazard severity maps. And so the question kind of becomes, do we really want to change the WUI map? There's a lot of other implications specifically around insurance there. And if we can accomplish our mitigation goals without updating the map, this might become a mute point. Because the goal with updating the map was really to get at the requirements around that. And so by updating our vegetation standards, we got halfway there by saying the WUI doesn't matter in San Rafael anymore. And then the last item ties right into that, which what in the plan called specifically for citywide adoption of 7A compliance with the new building code, which I believe you hear in the next two meetings, with the fire code, they're actually moving what was 7A, which was specifically called for construction standards within the building code that met various fire standards, including some of the things you see here. That is now becoming Chapter Five in the new California Wildland Urban Interface Code. As written, it will apply only to the WUI. But one of the things we will talk about over the code adoption cycle and be back to Council before is, should we adopt that citywide? Or using some type of... should we adopt that citywide or using some type of different mapping structure? So again, we don't have to update or change the map because of those other implications, but we can accomplish similar goals. And a lot of what's included in chapter five summarized here, none of this should sound shocking or things that we don't want to be doing. Dual pane windows are one of the best environmental practices and energy efficiency outside of being better for wildland fire, as an example. And this, the proposal that we have in the plan and that we still would present is that this isn't about forced retrofit, the way we're doing the roofs in which those roofs are over thirty years old. We're saying you must change the roof. This is just saying any new construction material period coming into Santa Fel for any reason that falls under what will be chapter five would meet these standards. So if you don't have to do anything on your house, you don't have to do anything in your house. But if you're making a choice to upgrade or to build an ADU or you are a totally new development project, those materials would now need to meet the standards, which also especially helps us just in sheer home proximity. So while our main, as you know, as under the wildfire action plan, one of our main goals, of course, is preventing wildfire. We also see one of the ways wildfire spreads is structure to structure. And we see that through structure ignition. So how we look at developing those construction requirements moving forward and any type of upgrade within the city will be one of the ways we can do that. So those are the three that you haven't seen a ton of progress on. As you can understand, they're fairly heavy, complicated ones. And particularly around the seven A, we wanted to wait to see the state code and we're now in that typical adoption cycle, so that's why we're here. We're not here tonight, but that's why this has been a delayed item, if you will. So we are looking and, you know, we've been before you a couple of years in a row with the updates on the plan and some items that have now been done for four or five years. And there's, there's been a lot of new tools that have come out, including fire pathway modeling, different ways we're modeling fire behavior. Unfortunately, we've had new devastating fires that we've learned from. And so there's a point where we're five years into, almost six, I mean, over six, I guess, actually, into the plan and saying, is the plan's structure still the right structure? Because we've checked off a lot of these items. And so we can't just keep coming to you and saying, check, 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 we did it, we did it. But how do we reorganize the plan to look at, reevaluating it if there are new priorities specifically along ignition reduction? One of the things we've started looking into is barbecue safety, particularly in our parks and open space. So staff's going to be looking at a way of how we reorganize the plan, focusing on things like ongoing programs, maintenance projects, where is the policy and advocacy work? And what maybe just is a completely new initiative that we want to undertake. We certainly don't want to undermine our previous public process. And so we want to continue to engage the old group we'll re-reach out to, as well as looking at how we do look and re-engage and kind of update this plan. So that the format makes sense because this is, as Kate mentioned on one of the earliest slides, this truly is a plan we open on a regular basis and has set us ahead so many times where there's not a question of like, oh, how do we do that? It's just we fall back to the action plan and then we apply it to, whether it's the mitigation plan, whether it's the work plan for the MWPA or whatever the case may be. And so we want to keep it that useful of a tool and we think it's time to refresh the structure and potentially call out some of the new science and some of those ongoing pieces. So that plan would come before you again, as well as, like I mentioned, the totally public process in that piece. And we're excited that we've made this much progress on it and that continues to be a valuable tool and continue to support councils, appreciate council support of all of our wildfire mitigation efforts. I believe, yeah. With that, we will take questions or comments.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Quinn. I will start with questions, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Always great to see the thirty-eight point plan come out, brings back lots of great memories. My question's super specific. Eucalyptus trees. Our previous speakers are not the only ones that hike up on Gold Hill, my hiking club trains here, we're there all the time. I've seen some of the clearing, but they didn't take all of the eucalyptus trees and they're growing back. So what's, what's the plan for the euc?
So I think that's a great question and I think it calls out some of the new science and some of the treatment methods. We, I don't think, mention herbicide application as an example at all in the action plan. And that is something that has been proven to help address regrowth and resprouting within eucalyptus. There is some new science around that. And then there is, you know, our initial code really focused on Italian cypress, juniper, bamboo, acacia, some other things. And I don't think we fully addressed eucalyptus in terms of what we want to see in the maintenance of eucalyptus. So I think it's a perfect example of why a little bit of re-looking at the plan makes sense. Specifically, what I would say is, like most things, big, healthy, mature trees, if they're well-maintained, we want to see them maintained because of all the benefits they provide environmentally, habitat, cooling ground, holding in moisture, all things that actually help reduce wildfire risk in addition to all the other environmental benefits. Healthy eucalyptus are sometimes, not always, you know, they can be challenging just from a branch. There's always folks concerned about fall risk. But that's one of the reasons we really focus on ladder fuels and smaller diameter trees. But I think that's something overall we continue to look at. We've applied forecal fire grants specifically around eucalyptus. We have not gotten one yet. We will continue that effort because we do think that's part of our overall forest health. But I think one of the other long-term visions we have now that we've gotten through a lot of that absolute immediate, we must do risk reduction, is what is a sustainable wildfire reduced risk Santa Fel look like? And a lot of that is removing super invasive species like eucalyptus, but also replanting. And so we need to balance that as well as what our funding allows us to do. So it continues to be an evolving, I know that's a very broad answer to a question, but the short answer is every eucalyptus is different and we have to catch it like all hazardous things on whatever that tree is doing in that space and the risk it may or may not be posing.
So there's not a specific advice being given to homeowners, for example, that have these hundred-foot tall woods?
If it is a healthy, mature tree that has had the ladder fuels mitigated, generally speaking, the recommendation would be to try to maintain it. Having said that, if you want it to go, we will help you make it go. And we'll look into replacement options as well that have, are more adapted to our fire environment.
But the game plan for city property like I see on Gold Hill is to cut them down.
Our current SEQA documents give us up to fourteen inches? Twelve inches on that answer being yes. So it's all about the size of the trunk.
Cut down the small ones?
Yes, and then treat the small ones so they don't sprout that up. Treat, make sure we're cleaning up all the debris they drop under it. And now we've really eliminated, you know, the odds of a fire getting into a canopy, which is what we are scared of and where that threat really is. If we do all that other work, we've really reduced that risk.
Thank you. And I do want to add a clarification, you know, it's typically the small trees. Those are the healthy, the healthy small trees. We do have exceptions in all of our SEQA documents for hazard trees, especially along Gold Hill grade fire road, anywhere that there is a target. And we do deem the tree to be a hazard if it's larger. We will proceed with that as well with removal.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, questions?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you for the presentation. I have three questions, but I might have more depending on the answer. So I think it's great that grants and direct assist have been available to the community. I had thought that in my, I made this up in my mind, but I saw numbers of one hundred-two and sixty-two. And while those are, those aren't substantial numbers, I had thought there might be more. And so I guess I'm just curious, did you think the same or is? Yeah, I'm just kind of curious if we might want to do higher engagement on taking advantage of this wonderful program.
So that is just this year, those numbers. So like overall, we've helped over five hundred or so folks with direct assistance. But if I'm fully transparent, it has been incredibly hard to give away money and to help people. We have, I think, at this moment, if a resident had everything wrong with their house, they could receive over fifteen thousand dollars in grants and almost no one is taking advantage of it. And that includes the wood shake roof, gutter guard grants we have, vents grants, vegetation in Zone Zero, overall vegetation grants, fences. And then we even created a quick fix program, which is literally just if we come to your property and say something's wrong and you send us a picture of it fixed, no questions asked, we will give you two hundred and fifty dollars. So we got, because part of, a lot of what we were seeing is people were either doing the work themselves or buying a tool to do the work. And it's just the documentation and the burdensome piece with that. And even those two hundred and fifty dollar quick fix grants, which please, anyone listening, anyone here, take advantage of them. I think we've done less than a dozen of them. So we want to be doing this. We flyer every house we inspect to get specific grant information. We're starting to brainstorm some more creative ideas, some more, how do we maybe move away from the word grant even? Just to like, let me give you money? Like, I don't know what the answer is, but like. And so I, we would appreciate all the support. We have the funds, a huge part of the appropriation that was on consent is dedicated to our ability to make sure we are never telling a resident in Santa Fel that they can't mitigate a risk because we ran out of money. Because we have the funds and we want to be supporting residents in that work. It is truly about trying to get the word out as much as we can and we will hand walk people through the process as much as we can as well.
Okay, yes, I will use this moment in my question and comments later to shout out to the community. We are trying to give away money. Okay, thank you. The dual gate, it seems like such a trivial one and I can understand that there's a desire to make sure that we have an analysis. At what point would you say the value of it might not be there? I mean, what is the sufficiency for it? And by the way, I do want to give attribution to who came up with it. It was one of our fire commissioners, Stan Burford, I think, who came up with the idea. And I think that there's value to it, but in the grand scheme of policy, if it may not. I mean, I'd love to make, you know, help you make the call.
Yeah, to be honest, because we've, I think, felt the way you're alluding to for a while, that hasn't been our focus area, so we haven't done a lot of analysis. I think one of the places that it does make some sense is with flagpole lots and some other specificities where there might be kind of more landlocked situations. And so I don't necessarily want to say it doesn't add value. I think as a citywide concept, I think it would, you know, it can be a recommendation. It can be something we have grants for, but in terms of requiring it, because you get into a lot of right-of-way issues and I have to have a fence into my neighbor's yard. My neighbor's never going to agree to that. So that's where some of those challenges are. So I think as a whole, I don't see us implementing it citywide. I could see us picking specific locations where we see it could truly have a benefit. And again, always supporting, if you want to do this, we will support you through grant funds to create a non-combustible gate along your fence line.
Okay, great. My final one, I think it's just the question, it's building on, I think where you were going with the presentation, which is that the value of the thirty-eight point wildfire prevention and protection plan has absolutely been beneficial to the city, whether it was getting the measure passed. Because it laid a very clear set of items for the community to look at and say, yes, we want, we want to do these things. And it's given you direction year over year on what to focus on. But I'm also hearing too that the, that it's, that it's time to evaluate. I guess what's buried in here is where I'm going to with my question, which is the relationship between this plan, the city's operations and then the MWPA. I think we can all probably draw a line between it, but for the community, I can also see that the thirty-eight point plan right now might end up creating more confusion to say, oh, how does this fit into it? And I think you're doing, my sense is you're doing a lot of work now to make certain it's aligning with the strategy that MWPA is, which we're aligning to now.
So I think maybe the simplest way to explain that is both our MWPA work plan and the hazard mitigation plan have county-wide impact or, and county-wide input. The thirty-eight point plan as is, is the only document we solely created just for the city and just at the city's direction with our experts. And so while we want it all to be aligned, I think still having something that is that Santa Fel focused will still serve us well. It will continue to be so. And maybe, and maybe the analogy is every year we only have so much money. How do we decide what to spend it on? Staff's not figuring that out in the moment based on the loudest person in the room, whatever the latest thing is. It is something we have laid out in advance, the way we want to be doing our best capital improvement projects and the way we want to be using taxpayer funds. We always put aside money in our budget every year for what we literally call small and responsive projects to make sure that we can adapt to the tree that fell here or the situation that evolved differently. But we want to be forward-thinking, we want to be strategically reducing risk. And I think being able to do it as Santa Fel focuses the plan lets us is, is the key distinction. But at the end of the day, they do all support each other. And we will be, you know, I guess maybe the next question is, is the confusion a problem? And I think, like, we always are having that dialogue around what we're doing. But at the end of the day, I think if staff can execute council's vision and the community vision and what our experts know on risk reduction is efficiently impossible, that's the goal. And I think the work of that action plan has done that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
I'm just bursting with pride.
Thank you both for, I've been waiting for this update for a long time and it's great to see it. And I'll, I'll share more comments. Couple of questions, so of the thirty-eight point plan, what would you say has been the most effective in reducing wildfire risk? And that's sort of part one. And then part two of that is of the next level of work that needs to be done, how are you prioritizing, what factors do you use to prioritize?
Yeah, so I think there's probably, I think resident action has been the biggest impact because we know house out is what saves homes and lives the most. And with that, I would say our ability to enforce. And so with that, I would hats off to council for not just saying, these are the best practices that we're going to encourage people to do, to truly take community safety seriously enough to say, we're going to require people to do this. It has given us so much ability to go to people and say, you have to do this and we'll also do it for you. So like, we're hand in hand, we're going to do this together. But this isn't a choice anymore about how we think about aesthetics around property. We have to be making progress on the safety front. So I guess that's three answers to the question about what's the most impactful. But resident action, council action and the ability to support our residents in achieving those two things combined. And then in terms of how we look at kind of what's next, I do think more of a focus on ignition reduction, which I guess ties into how do we know we succeed? And we're always looking at like, like we're proving a negative, which is constantly a challenge for us. It's, it's, oh, we never have fires here, we don't need that. No, it's we don't have fires here because we have that and because of the work we're doing. And so I think that's a really critical component of looking at how do we continuously do more ignition reduction? Whether that's through physical changes in the environment, like changing out barbecue grills that have big open flames with things that can be more contained, making sure we have clear, no grasses growing near barbecue, things like that. Or through public education, our ranger program, things like that. And then I think there's a lot of new pathway modeling coming out. And again, unfortunately, with the devastating fires we've had since we wrote the plan, we have a lot of new science and a lot of new modeling to look at. And so I think we want to continue to look at that and that analysis we've been doing pretty steadily for the last couple of years and want to do more of that and really develop the plan along those lines as well.
Great, thank you. So with the thirty-eight point plan, there was a lot of community engagement around that. And where we're at now, do you anticipate needing to have the community? I mean, it's amazing, little comments, I comment. It's amazing with a thirty-eight point plan that that was done before we were even thinking about Marine Wildfire Prevention Authority and before Measure C. And so that work, it was really important to engage the community because there was a lot of education that was happening at the same time. Where we're at now, do you anticipate, because we're getting a lot of community conversations along the way.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a lot of informal engagement we'll do. Like we do our Neighborhood Association and HOA Association Roadshow, I guess, kind of every winter, it feels like. But I, we also, a couple of years ago, completed the Public Perception Survey, which was a MWPA-funded project that asked residents some of these questions. What do you interpret as your biggest risk, things like that? So we have a lot of that data already. And then I would anticipate going back to the original Citizens Group and Committee, at least letting them know the update's happening. And then I would like to do a broad call for ideas because truly some of the most creative ideas we've had in the plan, and whether it's just about how do I give away money better? I mean, that would be a great piece to get feedback on. Or someone's got an initiative, you know, an initiative that we haven't looked at enough or they saw it in a community they used to live in and they want to apply it here. So I think there'll be some really formal kind of meeting structure. Of course, council will be briefed and then we'll do a lot more informal outreach. Because like you said, we are really engaged with our community in that way right now. And so we want to continue to build on that momentum and those relationships.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I'm trying to figure out how to have this be a question, not just a comment. So this was originally created in twenty nineteen, which is six years ago. And I was writing down some of the things you were saying, forward, that you, right now, we want to be forward-thinking, reduce risk, there's new science. And what I see in this plan is it's very operational and what the council's been moving towards is policy. Because you guys are the operational experts. So I guess my question is, is there a way of your reimagining or revising it that we help with the policy, the outreach, the community facilitation? But when it turns into the operational, because I do hear the value that you have and the department has around it. But I don't want us doing operations, so what would that look like? And you named a bunch of other plans and it just, I think, I'm trying to have clarity of what Santa Fel's doing, why we're doing it and you all are coming up with it. So we're not having to defend something that's in the plan that's dated or not. So do you understand what I'm trying to ask? I'm really struggling with that because I really feel like we're in a different time. So.
I think one of the first things that come to mind is one of the reasons we want to structure it, like with that policy called out specifically, is almost like that focus on that type of work. I think one of the things that's missing from the thirty-eight point plan is insurance, is everything related to how we do advocacy around insurance and working with things around those natures. But I think the, I think you bring up a great question about, is this a plan that has to and should come back to council as an adopted council plan? Or is it a work plan that council has blessed in some way? And I would turn to the city manager on some of those ideas and probably further conversation.
Before the city manager, so when you're talking about the policy, because in your presentation, you had all the numbers carefully listed, but then you had like the categories. So I saw those categories as policy direction and the ones underneath were operational. Is that kind of how you're, it was playing out and then I went here with the city manager? And then I want to hear what the city manager has to say, but.
Yeah, I think in the original plan, we blended those things. Like I think item one, don't quote me, I should have the whole thing memorized by now, but I don't. But it is, it is like reduce ignition risks in the city. And then the specific thing says, change the code. But then under that is like implement the code, enforce the code and all the operational things. And so the original plan really blended that like policy work with operations. And so the goal is kind of to pull them apart.
Okay. City manager.
The way you described that, Quinn, was spot on. From my perspective, we're five years into this, you know, we've got this foundation from this plan, but I would suggest that, that because it is so operational in nature, that it's not necessarily a plan that we would ongoing have formal council adoption of. We have informational updates all the time, like Measure P, progress update, this is. So I think we would continue to bring updates on new things like insurance or new developments. But I think going forward, this is, this is, to Quinn's point, if there's an ordinance change or something that staff is recommending to further one of these initiatives, then we'd bring that to council, but not necessarily to come back with another 15-point plan or whatever for council adoption, but just more to keep the council and the community informed.
Yeah, no, I like where you're going with that. We have our adopted goals and objectives, which was the council and the community's opportunity to weigh in on a policy level and then out of that, your work plans and also, you know, I was obviously informed by what the department wanted. So we have actually a new structure that didn't exist. Okay, just trying to figure out how, and evolution can be difficult, but I'm, one thing I'm really proud of in this city is that we're always willing to say, how is this best served the work that you're doing and the community work? And not have process and structure get in the way. And I feel like right now, I mean, it's listing all the different things that your MWPA, Councilmember Kurtz is involved with, and it just was starting to get, it was starting to dominate for me, get in the way of what we're trying to do. Okay, I guess there were some comments at the end of that, but so be it. We will open up, we'll see if there's any other public comment or questions. I'll open up the public comment on this item. If you have anything you'd like to share or a question you'd like to ask, now is your opportunity. You're required, but you're invited but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in.
I love saying my name, Salama from Terre Linda. Aye, everyone, mayor. Thank you, Quinn, for this excellent report. And speaking for the San Rafael Age Friendly Partnership Committee, I think that's our full name, Sparky and I want to continue working with the fire department on other, you know, we've had the community activities and such. And I would just wanted to say that the Amber Stomp event this year was like double the size of the previous year. And I think that that was just an excellent way of getting community, mass community education accomplished. And I thought it was, it's excellent and we need to do it every year. So thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you. And remember to keep age friendly in the loop. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Adema and I'm standing here as president of the Mono Cito Area Residents' Association. My head is spinning, tons of questions, but there's, the specific one I'm going to focus on has to do with your outreach to neighborhood organizations. And there, in our, on our street, for example, we're getting really local, there are two people who have dementia and are not maintaining their yard. And it's a fire hazard. Neighbors pitch in and we weed for them and we take stuff away and it's a lot of work because they're on slopes. Anyway, it sounded as though there were ways for neighborhood associations to ask for help for very specific properties that are not huge in terms of like national forests, but endanger the houses around them. Is that correct?
We'll get all the questions. Yeah, no, that's an excellent question.
Okay. I have lots more questions, but if you can answer that one, that would be great. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item?
Hi, I'm Belle Cole and it's a pleasure to be here and to hear about the, the integration, I think of, I work with all of these people, with MWPA, Ecologically Sound Practices, and with the fire department here. And I'm also chair of the Dominican Black Canyon Firewise Committee. And we have all the, we have the structure, it's here. And I wanted to say that I think that one of the reasons this is working is that because there is Measure C. I mean, I don't mean to say that the 38 wouldn't have succeeded, probably would, but fortunately we don't have to think about that question because we have it. And I think we should always, we should think about this in terms of, sort of not the county versus the cities, but that as an effort of all of us to protect ourselves and to do the best we can, we're small, we do the best we can and we have great resources. So I think that as we work to recertification and various things that have to do with the county, that the city and the county should be working together closely. And the other thing I wanted to say is that I think that we do have to do more in terms of reaching residents. I mean, what this woman said about people who have problems and can't deal with the things themselves. So I'm going to make sure that we work more closely with the people here to see that we get this, the information that is so valuable that's been done, not everybody knows about it. And I think it's really good to use our, our brains and our capacity to see that this gets out. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment on this item? Not seen anyone, I'll close the public comment. So you had a very specific question in there, which I'm sure you can't wait to answer, about outreach to neighborhood organizations. And I would say for folks that aren't maintaining yards, for whatever reason, I don't think we need to get into the reasons why, but how do you answer that?
Our direct assistance program has plenty of space and we're happy to do it. Particularly, I love the idea of kind of referring a friend, if you will. I think we actually had a really successful pilot in a, one of the CSAs, but we get some of our funding to support the non-CSA. So I won't get into the details of that, but it was a really successful pilot where it was a neighbor said, I'm going to go see how many people I can get signed up to remove their Thai Cyprus. And they did the work block by block and got like nine or 10 folks to sign up, which was amazing for staff because it greatly reduced our burden. And then all we're doing is, you know, executing one of our contracts to go reduce that risk in all those properties. So that was awesome. So the answer is absolutely yes. Literally right after this, we can get the information we need to. We do, we do have a lot of varied outreach. It's everything from things on doors to A-frames to social media and posts. And obviously, we are still not saturating and reaching folks in the right way. And so we're constantly trying to evolve that and meet people where they're at and we'll continue those efforts. But we, and we will also directly support HOAs that own their own property. So in some cases, there is community land that needs treated and addressed and an HOA might not have the budget to do it. And we're happy to do that. Either do that directly, do that through grants, or do that through helping to prioritize the workload. So people, if they have a budget, can use that budget, but they use it in the most strategic way possible.
Amazing, thank you. Well, I'll make sure that you guys exchange information so we can assist you in your neighborhood. So I'll comment unless there are other questions, I will start to go to comments and I'll start with the vice mayor.
It's just all grown up. It started out with, go make us a bold plan. And then we spent weeks over in B Street pounding out those individual pieces. And then the county woke up and we all got involved and it's, it's just become a part of government in Marin and we're leading the way. And I'm so proud, when I, when I go to other places hiking out with my friends and gone to CrossFit, I'm like, what's wrong with this place? They're just way behind us. So it's a pleasure to be a part of this and we've got to keep thinking about what's next. How can we maximize the impact of everything that you're doing? So keep up the good work, keep bringing bold things our way.
Thank you. I'll have you go last because you're on the MWPA. How about Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and just the continued progress. Although the, the item before us is the 38-point plan, I know that this is connected to the much larger story, which is how do we make certain that we can continue to protect ourselves? I do think that whatever it evolves into, I think it will always be wonderful to refer to it as the 38-point plan, even though it might evolve into something else. I was grateful that Belle Cole came forward to make public comment. So if folks don't know, Belle has been a leader in the community around biomass recovery at the very beginning stages as MWPA was forming. So I think as a community, we're all very grateful to Belle for her work there. And I think the 38-point plan has been said, represents so much effort, the confluence of leadership in the, in the city, engaging with the community, engaging with the wider, just making certain that it would, it could be funded. Measure C has continued to serve the city of San Rafael. I know that in the early days, as the idea started to gain momentum, it did require folks like you, the then city manager in chief, Gray, to go out almost city to city saying, hey, here's the vision, will you sign up? And so I'm very grateful that the 38-point plan is very much making progress and serving our community well. So thank you for that. And just my final thing, because I said I would plug it, is the city is trying to give away money. It's actually your money. Whether you're a renter or a homeowner, you are paying into the MWPA, which is funding back into the city. So please take advantage of spending your own money. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Kurtz, who is also our representative on the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority.
Yes, thank you. Again, I am, I know I'm biased, but I am very, very proud of the work San Rafael is doing and your work on the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. They're not two separate entities. It's really an all combined conversation. And also like to, you know, Belle, recognize the work that you've done as part of Ecologically Sound Practices and your partnership, both with San Rafael and with Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, all of it comes together. And none of this would happen without, we have funding coming from MWPA. We have ideas and strategies and approaches that come from, whether it's the 38 plan or 25 plan, whatever it's going to be. We know San Rafael is seen as the agency that's on the front line and on the forefront of this work. It is talked about over and over and over again of what San Rafael is doing and being used as the example. So thank you. Message really, follow along with Councilmember Hill was talking about, residents don't need to wait. You can have all the messaging and all the tools and everything else. And at the end of the day, it does come down to the resident doing the work. And, and the more we can do to help facilitate, that's great. But the number one question we get, I get is, where do I start? And I love, Quinn has answered this question all the time. And the question is, or the answer to that question, and can I say it? Anywhere. Just start. Just start on the first thing. And we hear that over and over and over again, and it really is true. We can all facilitate making that happen, but the residents have to make that first step and it has to really start. So I'm super excited by the work that's happening. I like the idea of, this was a plan that was created and not put on the shelf. It really was worked. It was a plan that was worked and that's unusual. And it's great to be able to go back to it. I've referenced it a number of times. I know you've referenced it and use it as a working document. And now we'll be going forward with continued working documents, but maybe just one less, which is nice, because we're not losing the work that has to be done. We're expanding and that work still has to be done. That's why a lot of that says that it's ongoing, because it's continued finding the trees and everything else. But our community is way in front and we still need to do more. And history, fire history, the term pathways of what we're talking about, that's the history of fire. And it's the way history has shown us what potentially can burn and what would be in that pathway. So we're using that information and really the results of this work, all this work is going to be the number of homes that get to zone zero. That's the result. And, and that's the one, see, for me, and there's a lot of work that's happening other places, but for me, that is the high focus right now, is getting homes. Again, you won't get there overnight to zone zero, but it's making that step in that direction. And I'm, I'm the first one who know, I mean, I need to do work at my home too. Everyone needs, there's probably work at everyone's home that needs to be done. And we need to get that work done because we know what history has told us and where the fire is going to, we need to be literally in front of it. So thank you again. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Quinn. Kate, I know this has been tireless, a lot of work. So thank you.
Thank you. So tonight was about getting an update on all the work that you've done, which you did, you gave us that update. It was about how that work is measured up against the 38-point plan and that has driven the work and then really where are we going from here? So we all agree as a community, and you've heard loud and clear from the council, that we are fully supportive of all the work that you continue to do. I'm going to push back on what Councilmember Hill was saying. I don't want to call it a 38-point plan. That to me is, is what it was in 2019. You have done so much more. And as Councilmember Kurtz just said, we're expanding it. And I feel that name constrains us and always has us looking back. I want us looking forward. And, and when you said forward-thinking, reduce risk, new science, that's what I want to have, whatever you want to call the thing, just don't call it the 38-point plan, because it doesn't show the investment of resources, time and energy and progress that we've made. Your stats on the number of houses and inspections, 100%, we still want to see that as part of the report outs that we have. And when we look ahead, I do believe that having this rolled into the goals, the policy parts and the goals and objectives, and this council again, has been supportive, the policies are there. And then in terms of the operations, you can come and tell us, you can, we'll help get out the word, but really that needs to be with the experts and hats off to Vice Mayor and everybody else that was a part of that original group that was willing to do the operations. And we've learned so much more. So I look forward to further updates as you see fit. I think the approval part is really through that kind of broader process. And I do want to underscore what, again, my colleagues have mentioned about that countywide integration, Measure C. None of this would have happened, MWPA and what Councilmember Kurtz does there. That is so critical. And I do, I was persuaded by what you said, Quinn, about how important this document, having a San Rafael-specific one, because I wasn't, I didn't understand the value of that from here, but I understand the value of that for the department. So I do think it's worth maintaining some sort of format that provides that guidance to you and having that more regional cross-county approach from where we sit is where we should be spending our efforts, so, and our time and our energy. So hats off. It's nice to be a leader in this area, as Vice Mayor says, when she goes around and looks at others. So with that, I would ask Councilmember Kurtz to make a motion on this item, please.
Sure. Like to make a motion to accept the informational report on the wildfire prevention and protection action plan and proposed revision.
Second?
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Congratulations, thank you. Thank you, Chief, for your leadership. Before we adjourn, we have open time for public expression. This is for any items not on tonight's agenda. We'll take comments, but of course, we can't answer them because they weren't agenda-y. I have two cards. One is Steve Danaher. He'd like to give some comments. Now's your chance.
I work at Seven, my name's Steve Danaher.
I'm sorry?
Seven 12D Street, just down the street between First and Second, there's a chiropractor in a health, health center building. And I want to talk about the ongoing crime in the area. And I brought some photos and made four copies. Could I distribute them to you?
You can give them to the city clerk and I'm sure she'll share them. The police chief is here and I'm sure he'll be interested in them. So go ahead.
Took some, there's a lot of drug dealing at the 711 and there's a truck loading zone that's from 6:00 AM to, I think, 6:00 PM, something like that. And the drug dealing starts around four. And usually they got two cars parked in the yellow zone, they start around four. And Friday and Saturdays are big days. And the Sundays, they'll have a third car parked on 711, backed up into the parking lot. And I think they use the cars because they keep the drugs in the trunks. And then that way the police came by, they could frisk them or whatever, they don't find anything because the drugs are in the trunk. So I work just two blocks from there. I walk downtown all the time, like once a week at least, have to go by the drug dealers. I walk downtown all the time, like once a week at least, have to go by the drug dealers. One time there's eight guys, they looked at all track stars, just dressed just impeccably. And they're all like, eh, eh, you know, I said, no, not interested. One time there was like five guys, five Mexican guys with two prostitutes. Hey, do you want some? No, not interested. And, you know, I wear nice clothes and such at work. And I think that, I know, a week and a half ago, a police car was parked in the 711 parking lot for Friday night. There was no one there selling drugs. I said, that's nice, but that costs money. But the, if you, the, the no parking zone for trucks, if that was made 24 hours and the police would actually enforce it, the drug dealers would have a really hard time putting their cars in. It would cost almost nothing, be a little inconvenient, a little bit less parking, but the, the drug dealers are parking there anyhow, so you're not really losing anything. And the other thing is, seven, in our unit, there's 12 suites and one of them faces D Street. And they've had it rented to prostitutes for the last 15 years. And I talked to the police about it, said, oh, the city's kind of got a hands-off attitude about it. And I know there's some rules that they have to abide by. One is they don't use the back door, but they use the back door all the time. And one of the things, they can't have blinking lights. Well, on the front where it says open, if you look on, on the third, third page, I took pictures of blinking lights goes on, open off, open off, and then O-P-E-N. I captioned most of that. And, you know, they're abusing those rules. So I think, you know, they've broken the rules. They've probably been given recommends before. It would be nice to shut them down.
Thank you for your partnership.
It is no good for the city at all.
Couldn't agree with you more. And you'll be happy, the police chief's in this room, as is our city manager, and we take these concerns seriously. And I have, I have your phone number that I'll be sure to pass to the city manager. Thank you. Next I have Sergio, I can't read my hand, Barrios. Bras, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers and community members, my name is Sergio Bras, and I represent the hard-working men and women of the Carpenters Union Local 35 here in Marin County. I'm here tonight to speak about the critical importance of having labor standards for upcoming projects in San Rafael. Labor standards are the fundamental protections that ensure our workers are treated fairly with dignity and respect. These standards guarantee fair wages, health benefits, apprenticeship opportunities and local hiring practices. More than just legal requirements, these protections are what stand between our community's prosperity and exploitation. They're the difference between building a strong, vibrant economy that benefits everyone and allowing developers to cut corners at the expense of our neighbors, our workers, and the integrity of our communities. When we allow developers to bypass these labor standards, we see negative consequences. Out-of-town contractors often flood into the city, bringing in workers who are not only from outside of San Rafael, but are also paid wages that are far below a living standard. These workers often do not have health insurance, retirement benefits, or even opportunities for skill development and advancement. Worse, still, they have no investment here. They won't be shopping in our local stores, sending their kids to our schools, contributing to our local economy in meaningful ways. Local workers would be, would benefit from these jobs are systematically shut out. However, when we prioritize strong labor standards like prevailing wage, skilled and trained workforce requirements, local hiring goals, and health coverage for all, we are not just building housing or commercial space, we're building careers, investing in the future of our community and creating pathways for our neighbors to enter and thrive in the middle class. Labor standards are more than just a line item in a contract. They are a long-term investment into the economic health of our city. They provide framework that ensures that those in San Rafael are not only treated fairly, but also have the opportunity to grow professionally and contribute to the local economy. That's why we strongly urge the city council to ensure that all development projects in San Rafael include strong labor standards like implementing pre-call language that essentially levels out the playing field. This is not just about the quality of a building, it's about the quality of life for people who build it and the residents who will live and work here for years to come. At the end of the day, the true value of any project starts with the people who construct it. Our community deserves nothing less than high-quality, well-built projects that are the product of hard work, fair pay, and commitment to the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? You can fill out a card or you can just say your name and what part of San Rafael that you, you're not required to, but you don't need to fill out a card. Some people do.
Thank you. Just didn't know about the card thing.
No worries, no worries. Go ahead.
My name's Tammy Edmondson. I'm with MB Free and I actually live in Mill Valley. We're a community group that's dedicated to advancing racial equity in Marin County through research-based best practices. We have been analyzing Marin County police data and working with local police agencies since 2021 to implement basically strategies for safe and equitable policing. So I want to commend the city of San Rafael for launching a civilian oversight process to build trust and accountability with the San Rafael Police Department following the beating of Julio Lopez. But as we detailed in our letter, which I'm pretty sure you got, the Police Advisory and Accountability Committee, or PAC, lacks the independence necessary to do its job, that is, independence from law enforcement. Since the PAC's inception, which was two years ago this month, San Rafael Police have curated, written, and/or presented virtually every word, every document, every item of information that the PAC has been allowed to receive. When it comes to the PAC's output, again, completely controlled by the San Rafael Police Department. The PAC has no power to communicate with the city council except through a police intermediary. A San Rafael police officer writes the PAC's agendas, its staff reports, its meeting minutes, and even prepares and presents the PAC's annual report to this council. Several months ago, the PAC adopted four recommendations to reduce the significant overpolicing of Black and Latinx people in San Rafael. Instead of advancing those recommendations to the council, the San Rafael Police gatekeeper assigned them to a subcommittee without the PAC's approval, where they continue to languish out of public view. The PAC's job is to bring recommendations to this council. So we ask that you please honor the PAC's work by placing those recommendations on the next city council agenda for public consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have any items not on tonight's agenda?
Hello, my name's Edgar Uskey. I am also speaking on behalf of MB Free. The PAC is a civilian oversight body. Independence from law enforcement is the single most important aspect of meaningful and effective civilian oversight. Without that independence, there is no accountability and no foundation for community trust. We urge the city council to, to release the PAC from its inappropriate dependence on the San Rafael Police Department by assigning a staff liaison to the PAC who is truly independent of law enforcement. The composition and training of the PAC leaves this body defenseless against the law enforcement interests that control its operations. With a single exception, the PAC members have no prior knowledge or experience in police oversight or criminal justice and have never received the, the training that they need to get. Ironically, the only member with relevant experience is a career prosecutor who ultimately served as Marin County District Attorney, the county's chief law enforcement officer. This further entrenches the inappropriate law enforcement dominion and control over the PAC. This isn't meant as an indictment of Ms. Camina or of SRPD officers who manage the PAC, but civilian oversight is premised on the fundamental truth, the law enforcement officers and the communities they serve perceive and experience policing very differently. Law enforcement oversight is no oversight at all. Only the city council has the power to fix this. An independent staff liaison and training for the non-professional members would be terrific, but MB Free is here to help. Please reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have anything not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Not seen anyone, we are going to adjourn. Take care, everyone.